If you are down front to sign in, continue to do that because we had this late addition to the agenda and I'm trying to give people time to sign up if they want to sign up to speak. But while we're doing that, we're going to start our meeting as we typically do with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So let me call on Pastor John Herring to come to the podium over here, sir. And I think we've got a couple of seniors from Central High School and a couple of Boy Scouts that are going to join and lead us in the pledge of allegiance following the invocation. So would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us bow our heads. Merciful kind Father, we thank you on today. We recognize who you are. Oh Father, we realize you're not just a good God, you're not just a great God, but we realize on today that you are an awesome God and you're certainly worthy to be praised. So here we are today, oh God, seeking to you. I pray now for those who are in the offices that govern this great county and city and that of Macon Bibb. God bless our county officials to make wise and godly decisions which are in the best interest of this place. Dear God, I ask now that even when our opinions are differ, we pray now that you help us find common grounds and reach peaceful resolutions. Dear God, I pray, God, that you teach us how to be God fearing and law abiding citizens. I pray, Lord, that you help us to receive and embrace the charge of those who have authority over us. Bless every household, Lord, within the borders of our community and help us to be lovers of you. So God, we ask now that you bind up confusion and loose clarity. We pray that you bind up division and loose unity. Bind up poverty and then, bind up poverty, dear Lord, and then loose wealth. Be with each and every one of us now, God. Now, God, as we go into this meeting, have your way now, Lord. Lead us in the right directions. I pray that you oppose every distraction. I pray that you obligate angels to assist us and I pray now, God, that you own our day. Be with us in his present name in Christ. Amen.
Could you join us in the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Our prayer tonight, invocation given by John Herring, who is the senior pastor of Glorious Hope Church in Macon. He's a gifted pastor, teacher, and expositor of God's word. John's married to Jada Fambro Herring and he's the father of Alexandra and Malik. John lives by his favorite scripture, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not unto thine own understanding; and all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy path," Proverbs three verses five and six. Pastor Herring, thank you very much for being here tonight and thank you for giving us the invocation and for what you do at Glorious Hope. We appreciate that. Our pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry, our pledge of allegiance was also led by a couple of seniors who happened to go, I believe both of them go to Glorious Hope Church. The first is Nikala Perlot. Nikala, would you stand for us so we can recognize you? Nikala is a senior at Central High School, be attending Savannah State University in the fall, a major in biology with plans to become a registered nurse. She's a member of Glorious Hope Missionary Baptist Church where she sang in the choir from 2015 to 2017. She enjoys drawing and singing in her free time. Also, Jatavian Williams. Jatavian, would you stand, please? Jatavian is a senior at Central High School and will be attending Savannah State University in the fall, a major in biology and minor in art. He is a two-sport athlete, playing baseball and football. He also enjoys drawing and painting portraits of others to promote his art business, Humble Creations. We're delighted that the two of you are here and our two scouts, Jalen Threet. Jalen, would you stand for us, please? Jalen Threet is a seventh grader at Miller Middle School and part of Troop One Hundred, the Boy Scouts of America, which is a troop chartered by one hundred black men of Macon, Middle Georgia. And Jalen is accompanied by Jacob Threet. Jacob, he's also a seventh grader at Miller Middle School and part of Troop One Hundred as well. And I'm guessing now the two of you are twins. No. Well, you bear strong resemblance and certainly there's a lot of familiarity, but thank you. And isn't it nice when we hear so much bad news about young people that we see such wonderful examples of wholesome, talented young people that are doing great, Boy Scouts and seniors at Central High School? We wish you well in all of your future endeavors and thank you for being here to lead us in the pledge tonight. We are, we are on your side. Next, let me ask my attorney, do I need a motion to add this item out here or is it automatically added? It wouldn't hurt to add it, though, would it? Okay, we had a late addition in the committee of the whole and that being the bill and ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend certain sections of chapter sixteen of the inaugural code of ordinances for Macon Bibb County to prescribe a maximum penalty for certain violations related to possession of less than an ounce of marijuana. So we need a motion to add that to the agenda for action tonight. Got a motion by Schlesinger and a second by Mayor Protem Tillman. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. I think I got three no's. Let me see the hands of the no's. One, no. Two no. Two no's and seven yeses. So we're adding it, adding it to the agenda and that'll be item Q on, under old business when we get to it.
I'd like to move that that item Q.
Be brought to the front of the, of the agenda list, become item A or whatever it is. I'd like to take that up first.
Well, I've got a motion to move it to the front of the, move it to the front of the agenda under old business, motion by Schlesinger, second by Lucas. There's a further discussion on that. Hearing none, all in favor of moving that to be the first item of old business, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The ayes have it. That'll be, that'll be the first item of old business when we get there. So next on our agenda, however, is the approval of the minutes. We had a commission, we had a pre-commission meeting on May the seventh and minutes have been prepared from that meeting and we had a regular commission meeting on May the seventh. Those minutes have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be made in those minutes? And if not, can I get a motion? Motion by Schlesinger, second by Winn to approve both sets of minutes. All in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it and both sets of minutes are approved. We had an item on the agenda for a presentation by the United Way, but I'm not sure anybody is here tonight from the United Way, so we may need to postpone that. Anybody here from the United Way about a check presentation? Okay, well, we had a mix-up then, so we'll postpone that item to a later meeting. So that brings us down to another invited guest and I'd like to ask Rick Devens to meet me down here at the podium. We're going to present a proclamation to Rick tonight and this is really a special proclamation and it reads as follows. Whereas Rick Devens is a television anchor with local news station WGXA, so if he looks familiar to you and you think, I've seen that guy somewhere, then maybe that's it. Rick Devens, a television anchor, local news station WGXA, has become an integral part of Macon Bibb County community, bringing us timely and informative news every morning. And whereas Devens was selected to participate in the national television show Survivor: Edge of Extinction, which is the thirty-eighth season of the show running nineteen years, apparently they have two, two seasons every year, so thirty-eight seasons in nineteen years, a show which Devens has watched since the very beginning and has tried out for on several occasions. And whereas Devens initially, after having been selected, was voted off the island, voted off, voted off the island, but fought his way back onto the island, making him a primary target for several weeks in a row, but he was able to make it all the way to the final four contestants before being sent to the fire making challenge because he was the top player. And whereas Devens is an Eagle Scout, whereas Devens is an Eagle Scout, which helped prepare him for the difficult and different aspects of the show and his masterful playing of the game has led him to be called one of the best players in the history of the show. And whereas on the live national finale, Survivor's host Jeff Probst announced that he knew Macon was a great city. And whereas Devens met and married his wife, Becca, here in Macon Bibb County, and they have two children, Jack and Juliette. Up there making noise, yay! That's great. And without their support and that of his extended group of family and friends, he would not have been able to participate in his dream and be gone for seven weeks. Wow, you do have a devoted family. Now therefore, I, Robert A. B. Rickett, do hereby proclaim, Tuesday, May the twenty-first, twenty nineteen, is Rick Devens' day in Macon Bibb County and I encourage all citizens to congratulate him on his amazing run in Survivor for making our community proud of his abilities and for shining a positive light on our community for the world to see and witness where I have heron to set my hand, cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this twenty-first day of May. And Rick, I present this to you with my congratulations. It's a wonderful job, well done, we're proud of you.
This is, thank you guys. Come on up, Jack. Yeah, man. Thanks, buddy. Jack is wearing his Survivor buff tonight, only the best. Thank you, Miles, my other son. Thank you all so much. This is awesome. When I got invited, I did not expect that I was getting a whole day. I'm very excited to have May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. I always had Macon in my heart out there. I always had Middle Georgia on my mind. I really didn't want to embarrass you all because you've given me so much. I came here right after college, got the job at WGXA. I've been there ever since because we love it here. My wife is from Hawkinsville, so we love the entire mid-state and thank you all so much. Thank you to Becca, the real Survivor, obviously, two kids, two dogs, two cats. And Amira was helping us so much, absolutely, our great friends. And thank you to WGXA who appreciated that I'd been there so long that they let me live this adventure and they did not have to. CBS would not have let me go on without them, so, awesome, guys. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
I noticed that and didn't realize that Pastor John Herring would be here this evening. Pastor Herring recently celebrated his seventh pastoral anniversary and we've been hitting and missing each other as far as trying to present it. Matter of fact, this past Sunday, I was trying to come to his church and he was at a previous engagement. So we have the proclamation here, just went and gotten it and I asked the mayor to present it to you, so if you would join us, sir.
Pastor Herring, this is, this is another proclamation issued tonight and it reads as follows. Whereas Macon Bibb Commissioners join Glorious Hope Baptist Church in celebrating the seventh pastoral anniversary of Pastor John Herring. And whereas Pastor Herring is the fourth and youngest pastor of Glorious Hope Baptist Church, is the third child born to Pastor Emeritus Wallace B. Herring Senior and Lena Jordan Herring. And whereas Pastor John, as he is affectionately called by Glorious Hope, is a graduate of Southwest High School and furthered his education at Fort Valley State University, earning a BA in Business, and as a graduate of Liberty University School of Theology with an MS in Theological Studies. And whereas Pastor John has served Glorious Hope with a focus on giving God the best that we have in spirit, in service, and in selflessness, he has a heart for our community in that he and Glorious Hope are part of the Fellowship of Churches of Macon, a ministry of local churches that work together to raise funds for college scholarships and is partners with Men About Change, a local nonprofit, to train young men in character education and to assist them in being better all-around students. And whereas Pastor John has instituted several outreach ministries, including a vibrant and active prison ministry where several inmates have received the plan of salvation, an active community outreach ministry where the church serves every resident at Laurel Bay Nursing Home and feeds the homeless at daybreak at least twice a year. And whereas Pastor John is a published author of the book entitled Seven Enemies Within Me and is the founder of John Herring Ministries and the greatest attribute of Pastor John is his love for all people. And whereas Pastor John is married to the love of his life, his greatest supporter and biggest cheerleader, Jada Fambro Herring, and is the father of Alexandra and Malik. He lives in life according to his favorite scripture, as I read a little earlier tonight, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not unto thine own understanding; and all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy path," Proverbs, chapter three verses five and six. Now therefore, I, Robert A. B. Rickett, do hereby proclaim, April the seventh, twenty nineteen, is Pastor John Herring Day. We're gonna have to get you a redo on that one since the seventh of April is already behind us, but we've been trying to get this to you since then. April the seventh, twenty nineteen, is Pastor John Herring Day in Macon Bibb County and I encourage all citizens to join as a community in congratulating Pastor Herring as he celebrates his seventh year as pastor of Glorious Hope Church and witness where I have heron to set my hand, cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed, seventh day of April twenty nineteen. Congratulations to you sir and thank you for what you do to our community, for our community.
Well, first of all, may God be the glory. Amen. I'm just so appreciative and so honored of this. I just want to thank Mayor Rickett and Commissioner Tillman and all of our county commissioners in what you're doing in this city. I just ask that you all continue to pray for us at Glorious Hope as we try to continue to do, make a positive difference in the community. God bless each and every one of you all.
The next item on our agenda is a time for public comments on agenda items. These are items that are on the agenda for action tonight. This is so that we get to hear from you before we vote. If you signed up for a non-agenda item, we'll recognize you a little later in the program. First, Mr. Ken Smith wants to talk to us about this marijuana issue. Mr. Smith, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
As I say, here we go again. I just want to ask y'all, how much is a life worth? I hope it's not seventy-five dollars. I hope when a kid gets out of it that has been on drugs that they hit someone or someone dies. That's extreme, but it can happen. It does happen. Also, anytime all of us employee people, if a person has had drugs in them, we don't hire them. If they have any kind of accident, be it their fault or not, first thing you do when you take them to occupational therapy is they take a drug test. Workman's comp people make us do that. If they've got drugs in their system, we have to fire them. And it's just not a small thing. I've got grandchildren, seven and two, and I want to keep them away from these kind of things as much as I can. Also, I don't want some young kid who is a good kid, who got, who's as smoking pot as they call it, has a wreck and killed someone, that person's gonna carry it the rest of their life. That's a hard burden to carry. And y'all think about that, seventy-five dollars could be a life. All right? And I'll just give y'all some more comparisons. On our parking we got downtown, on our parking, if you park on the sidewalk, it's fifty dollars. If you want to get a parking meter per month down here, if you're doing a job downtown, it's a hundred dollars per parking meter per month. No, parking meter, excuse me, parking space. I've got eight of them. I'm paying eight hundred dollars a month for parking spaces. What is the comparison to marijuana? And then I want to give y'all some stuff. This is so bad, I got to get glasses, I'm getting old. Y'all got to understand that. But this is some driving laws we've got here that I'm gonna show you about. A kid that's sixteen, young, we won't even let anybody ride with him for the first six months except the family member. After the first six months, they can have one under twenty-one in there with them. We're saying that their judgment is impaired and very used to be in insurance, but I think it's a sixteen-year-old, it's eight more times to have a wreck than any other age group. They haven't got it together. They don't need anything as a distraction, loud radios, anything else. But it says also that they can't be driving from twelve o'clock AM and five AM, that's new in. First six months, if they get any kind of, they can be, lose their license if they've stayed out of school for ten days, unapproved it, if they have done anything. All of this is reasons to drop a kid from a driver's license. And these are things that we're living with every day. If y'all will get on there and look at it, if he's dropped out of school, ten or more school days unsecured, if he's threatening or striking a teacher, or if he's making, he or she is making problems hitting anything, or if there's any kind of drugs or anything on it, they're gone. You don't have to do it. It said it should be, can be suspended for reckless, reckless driving, purchase of an alcoholic beverage, underage possession of alcohol while driving, unlawful passing of a school bus, improper passing on hill or curve, and extending, getting a super speed of over twenty-four miles an hour. Now these, just to get your driving privileges, things that happen to you. All right, the first DUI, it says if you're under the age of eighteen, if you've got an oh point oh-two, not a point oh-eight, that they, they can take your license for a minimum period of six months. Now we talking about just nothing almost, but we're talking about they can have marijuana and it's no problem. And it says if you, if there's, if your blood concentration is eight percent, which is our legal blood level here, then they take your license away for twelve months. Somewhere along the line, if that's that bad that we need to stop them driving, we need to be, have something preventative in that and make it a little more, when you stayed out late and your daddy said, boy, I told you to be home at twelve, you hit twelve oh-six, go to bed. If, that didn't worry you too much. If daddy said, son, you stay home all next week, or if you were lucky enough to have a cough, which I didn't, you, you lose the cough for a week. You have to have a deterrent to make people do something like that. And I wanted to talk to you about some, and I got to go fast, I know. All right, marijuana side effects. It says the effects of pot can be devastating, both to the health of the user and user's life. Side effects, long-term can increase, risk of cancer and impaired cognition and memory. All right, it's called the high, which I think we all know that. It says marijuana affects compound over time, particularly harmful to side effects of smoking weed. Smoking weed, they has, it has three times the tar that a cigarette has. And you get one-third more in your respiratory system, which that can give that, the dependence of it. Also, you can have hormone secretion dysfunction, increased heart rate, cough, wheezing, phlegm production, bronchitis, infusemia, cancer, infertility. That might not be bad on some of us.
Mr. Smith, your time.
Marijuana side effect is psychosis.
Your time is expired, sir.
Is five expired? All right, so I'll go just say that, can you let me tell about the women that's on it for the children? That's, that's important.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. I just want to say, if you own marijuana ladies and you have a child, he's liable to have, he or she is liable to have stuff wrong with them all their life.
Thank you very much. Tom McCain, Mr. McCain also wants to talk to us about this marijuana bill. Mr. McCain, you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, counsel, for considering this. I'm Tom McCain and I'm a retired veteran, I'm a retired Georgia peace officer, and I'm now the executive director of Peachtree Normal, which is Georgia's national organization for the reform of marijuana laws. I'm often asked why a retired cop would wind up running a marijuana legalization organization. I guess it's a fair question. Short answer is injustice. I saw in my law enforcement career how minorities and poor people are targeted for marijuana crimes, especially simple possession. So I applaud this initiative to reduce the harm caused by a marijuana possession case. Now, I've heard some mission, some mention that maybe a few of you are still under the impression that marijuana is a gateway drug. So I'd like to point a couple of things out. Might help sway you, might not. Attorney General Loretta Lynch was addressing a class of high school seniors and told them that the DOJ was not really seeing marijuana as the first step towards further drug use. She said that tobacco and alcohol were normally the gateway. The Drug Enforcement Administration has completely removed the marijuana gateway theory from its website and even dare drug, even dare, their website states that they cannot conclusively say that marijuana is a gateway drug. So in fact, in those states that have either a medical or an adult use law, opioid overdose deaths are down by twenty-five percent. And the truth is that marijuana is proving to be an exit drug from addiction to other Macon would be the tenth jurisdiction in Georgia to pass such an ordinance. And I urge you to do so. I urge you to vote yes and send a further message to our state legislators that this is an idea whose time has come. Jimmy Carter tried to get Congress to decriminalize the possession of one ounce or less of marijuana in nineteen seventy-seven, forty-two years ago. And we're still fighting this. We're still fighting this today because Congress ignored him. So, and I've just got to address some of the things that, that I just heard. A lot of those, a lot of those points that were made are being proven wrong on a day-to-day basis. And we are way past reefer madness in this country. Eleven states that have legalized it completely, thirty-one states plus the District of Columbia who have some type of medical marijuana law. And here we are today in Macon and the only thing that we're talking about doing is reducing the fine and reducing the harm that is caused by possession of one ounce or less. As far as the statement that was made that, about juveniles and about young folks, we don't advocate that. We don't advocate that our young people be allowed to, you know, we don't advocate even in our legalization program, legalization efforts, that young people be allowed to purchase this. You know, if you go to Colorado, you have to be twenty-one to get into a store. You know, so, so we're not advocating that young people use this. And as far as dealing with marijuana usage for juveniles, that's a separate issue. We're talking about folks who can legally be arrested at the age of seventeen and above that we're talking about harm reduction for. So it affects jobs, it affects the ability to get a job, and I look at those scouts that were over here. I'm a scout, or I was a scout, and I get to thinking, you know, I've never been arrested in my entire life. What would have happened to me had I made a quote-unquote youthful mistake and been convicted of possession of marijuana? Would I have been able to get into the air force? I would have been able to become a cop in Georgia because you can do that with a misdemeanor marijuana charge on you. with a misdemeanor marijuana charge on you.
Mr. McCain, thank you very much, sir. Your time is expired, but we appreciate your comments and appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Christina Mullenax. Ms. Mullenax, thank you for being here. You're recognized, she wants to talk to us about the marijuana bill as well. And you're recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. I am a citizen of Macon, and I want to urge you to vote no against this issue. Uh, lowering the fines would be a detrimental mistake for our community. And I think it would send the wrong message. Uh, two wrongs don't make a right. And I think that, there's a story that I was thinking of that somebody told me in sc- in school. I was gonna read you this letter, but I was sitting there thinking of it. There was a city, an imaginary city, and there was a man who went down to the river one day, and there was a baby floating by. And they got the baby out of the river and they took care of it. Two more days later, they were down by the river, there was three babies. They went and got the babies and they took care of them and, you know, did whatever they had to do. And this kept happening week after week. And then one day, somebody said, "Wait a minute, where are all these babies coming from?" I think that this proposal puts us a step closer to decriminalizing marijuana. And if you go on the Dare website, there is multiple resources and articles where they've done studies since they have decriminalized marijuana in Colorado, and they've seen an increase in the harmful impact. And I emailed all, those articles to all of y'all yesterday, so you can go on and you can get the statistics yourself. But also, another phrase has been in my mind in the last couple of days. My mom used to tell me, "If so-and-so jumps off a bridge, does that mean that we have to do that too?" And I think that if we follow through with this proposal, Macon will continue to jump off a bridge. I'm a product of a Dare generation. For three years, I was a teacher to fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. And I watched all those fifth grade students who came from bad backgrounds and good backgrounds, and I saw how Dare helped them. What I think we should do instead of lowering the fine is take that fine and all those fees and give more money to organizations like Dare to help kids to have the confidence to say no, uh, to not get into crime and drugs, uh, because once they do, I've also seen in my own family, uh, I have cousins who grew up smoking pot, uh, went on to use meth and crack and went to prison. And those things happen in our community sadly. But lowering the fine would be the same thing as, for example, if someone is drunk driving and we see an increase in DUIs. We wouldn't lower the fines, we would get to the root of the problem. And that's what we need to do with this issue. I don't want to live in a community where people are using drugs and, and drugs lead to crime, but there are underlying issues. There's a reason why so many kids, so many people are using drugs. And those are the things that we need to solve, not lowering the fines. So I trust that you will consider this and also consider that we don't want to send the wrong message. If you lower the fine, it sends the message that this is not as serious as it really is. And it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenax. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Billy Harold, or Bill Harold? Hey, Mr. Harold. Uh, I, I think you're also here to talk to us about the marijuana bill. And you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's Bill Howell, by the way.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced that.
You'll probably see that name a lot here regular soon. Um, unlike some of the people that have spoken before me, uh, I don't have an elegant speech prepared because I found out about this as I walked in that you were going to discuss it. Uh, another point, um, I hadn't seen the last proposal, not exactly sure what the final draft is, but I have read the initial draft and, uh, I'm opposed to it. And I'll tell you why. Uh, what kind of message are we sending people when we say, "Well, it's okay, we're not gonna give you a record, we're not gonna put this on your record, but, um, you know, if you smoke weed or whatever, you're not gonna be able to, uh, as the other guy said, it affects workers' comp, it affects employment, it affects everything." So, the way I, what I see here is just another, uh, form of watering down our moral compass in this city. You know, personally, this is not to discuss the legalization of marijuana, medical marijuana. We all have our opinions about some of that. This is dummying down our laws and saying it's okay, it's okay to have just a little weed. Well, how much is a little weed? You know, what are you gonna do next month? You gonna make it a pound? Uh, this is, this is ludicrous to, to say it's okay to, to have a certain amount of weed, but don't go over that. Because we all know the, the end, the end goal here is to keep, um, keep it off your record. But, you know, if you do the crime, you gotta pay the time. Uh, I don't have a whole lot more to say, but, uh, I hope that you guys will vote no. And I hope that you guys that approve this, I hope that the citizens of Biv County are paying attention to who's voting how tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. We appreciate your comments and appreciate you being here. Um, Mr. Raymond Wilder? Hey, Mr. Wilder, you also signed up to talk about marijuana.
Thank you, Mayor.
Recognized up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, all the Commissioners here, we appreciate all y'all do. I too do not have a big speech prepared, but I've had family members been involved with marijuana and move on up to other things. And I know some people say it's not a gateway drug, but believe what you want to believe, but it is what it is. I just want, more than anything, urge each of you to say no to this. And you're the ones that, uh, say, think it's okay, uh, think about your children or your grandchildren. Do you really want them exposed? That's really about all I can say. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wilder. We, we appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Um, Mr. Stanley Atkins? Mr. Atkins wants to talk about cannabis possession. Recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Stanley Atkins II. I'm a United States Navy veteran, a retired firefighter, paramedic, and I'm currently the Georgia chapter president of minorities from medical marijuana. In the opening prayer of this meeting, Pastor John Herring asks that those before us make wise and godly decisions. Well, it appears that our prayers have been answered tonight. You've presented, you've been presented with the opportunity to do what is right and what is in the best interest for the city of Macon. As a cannabis advocate, I have successfully assisted in the, the city of Atlanta and the city of South Fulton's decriminalization efforts. And how much is a life worth? And he asked, "Is it worth seventy-five dollars?" Seventy-five dollars can change the course of a college student's life forever. Macon Bibb is home to hundreds, if not thousands, of college students whom will be home for the summer. Under your current laws, if one of those students is arrested for possession of cannabis, they will be arrested, their vehicle will be impounded, they will have to pay to bail out. The student will then have to go to court, be subs- subject to a fine as well as up to a year of probation. Not only will the students be subject in the judiciary system, but also in the educational system. These students may lose all beneficial financial aid. And some of those students who are from the Macon area will be expelled from their university and be forced to return home without completing their education simply for the possession charge, while also having a misdemeanor arrest on their record. Tonight, we acknowledge two students who will be going off to college. Think of not this for them, but for their peers. And this could, how this could assist them in their pursuit of education. I was expelled from high school for possession of cannabis. I was, uh, discharged from the military after two deployments for cannabis usage. And for me, as a recovering addict and a person that's had difficulties with health problems, cannabis was an exit drug. And whether they want to acknowledge it or not, Georgia, cannabis saved my life. And I went on to pursue my advocacy at the state and city levels. Georgia has moved forward with a medical cannabis program. And we're not here to talk about anecdotal evidence because to the previous speakers, I would really like to see their research and the sources of their data because it sounded very skewed and very anecdotal. And for the farmer who needed to go tend to his horses, well, we may need some of the defecation from those horses because with our Georgia hemp program, whether you want it or not, industrial hemp, which is a form of cannabis, will be grown in Georgia as early as this summer. I ask that you think wisely and think ahead. As the city of Atlanta, South Fulton, Kingsland, Clarkston, multiple jurisdictions have gone forth with this ordinance, and not one jurisdiction has provided any research or data that said they saw a spike in usage. Georgia is at the tipping point of an opioid epidemic, and it is proven, as Mr. Tom McCain stated, that states that have passed some fort of cannabis reform has seen a decrim in opioid-related deaths and usage. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Uh, finally, Mr. Joe Powell? Mr. Joe Powell wants to talk to us about the marijuana law. Mr. Powell, thank you for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Well, first of all, I'm not sure what the fine is. But it sounds to me like seventy-five dollars is a little bit low. Okay, maybe a lot low. Okay, maybe seventy-five, maybe seven hundred and fifty dollars. Y'all wanna meet me halfway on this? Is the same fine gonna be for no matter where you're at? Say if you're walking down the street, is that gonna be a seventy-five dollar fine? As opposed to driving a car is gonna be a seventy-five dollar fine? Say if you're smoking pot, driving a car? That's, that's gonna be only seventy-five dollars? Okay, well, uh, we, we need some more discussion about this. We don't need a do- a dozen and a half organizations and individuals to come to our town and try to dictate what we should do. And then they go to another town, do the same thing, no, no, no. We should be able to solve this problem on our own. Um, somebody said that part of the issue is it takes up too much manpower to process these people downtown. Fingerprinting, but that needs to be done. Everybody that breaks the law should be fingerprinting, get the picture taken. That way, if there's another crime somewhere, we have something to look at to compare and see if that, is that that person's fingerprints? Oh, yeah, I recognize him from the video. Um, well, suppose, suppose somebody is given a ticket and say, "Okay, here's your ticket, but you still gotta go downtown and be processed. Give us a call, set up an appointment, go down there, get an appointment made. It's up to you to go get processed. Get your fingerprints, picture. If you don't show up, we'll come arrest you and take you downtown ourselves." That will free up a lot of time and manpower. Just say, "Look, here's your, here's your date to come down here. You and ten other people's come down here to get processed at this time on this day." I don't want to hear anybody tell me that it can't be done. If that, if, if somebody says that's not good enough, well, let's put our heads together some kind of way and make it good enough because everybody who breaks the law needs to be processed in that way. That's about all I have to say right now, but I think more people need to put their heads together, come to a conclusion, meet each other halfway, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. We appreciate your, your comment, appreciate you being here. Uh, no other, uh, people signed up to speak about an agenda item. Uh, so we'll move on now, uh, to reports from our standing committees. Uh, the first committee to report is Operations and Finance Committee. And, uh, that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Uh, Chairman Watkins?
Sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and took the following actions. The committee approved the following SLOPS projects. We appropriated one point nine million dollars to the Towers Line items for an agreement with Isla demolition, for the demolition of the government center tower, radio center tower, excuse me. And we also approved an agreement with Allstate Tower for construction and installation of upgrade to the Knight Road Communication Shelter in the amount of seven hundred thousand nine hundred, seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Appropriating, and we also appropriated two point five million dollars for, for funding for the Middle Georgia State University Road and Sidewalk Improvement Project. The committee approved the following agreements. An agreement with the River Edge Behavior Health for lease of office space in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And the committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. Uh, twenty-two thousand eight hundred six dollars from fund balance to the Emergency Management Agency for Flood Damage in the EOC, and sixty-five thousand dollars from fund balance to the Coroner's Contractual Services Account. The committee approved the following free, the committee approved allowing free visitation by Bibb County Schools for school trips to Lake Tobosaki. This concludes my report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins.
Excuse me, I've been here since two o'clock during budget hearing, that was a rough read.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, the, uh, next committee is Economic and Community Development, uh, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee, uh, met on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and we took the following actions. The committee, uh, approved the recommendation of the mayor to appoint Raymond Timely to the Bibb County Civil Service Board. We also approved the mayor's nomination, uh, to reappoint Nancy Terrell Esquire to the Bibb County Civil Service Board. Uh, this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, Public Safety Committee, I understand, no report?
No report.
Okay. Uh, that takes us to Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Allen. Vice Chairman Allen?
Chairman, Mr. Mayor, the Facilities Engineering Committee met on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and took the following action. The committee approved the release of the demolition lien filed against the partial of real property known as fifteen nineteen Schofield Street Lane. This completes the report of Facilities and Engineering Committee, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Allen. Uh, that brings us then to the next item on our agenda, uh, which is the Consent Agenda. Uh, the Consent Agenda is where we, uh, approve alcohol licenses that have been requested. Um, there were originally four, uh, license applications that were submitted. Three of them were tabled, uh, in the committee of the whole preceding this meeting. And therefore, only one, uh, application is here for final action. And that's an application by Mr. Brandon Lawler. Uh, the business name is Macon Bar Services LLC. Uh, it is at four ninety-nine MLK Junior, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Uh, it is accompanied by the sheriff's, uh, affirmation of a successful background check, uh, on the applicant, Brandon Lawler. Uh, planning and zoning compliance certificate saying that, uh, this is proper zoning, uh, for a, uh, bar with a music venue and live entertainment, uh, at that area, and, uh, appropriate fees having been paid. Now, it is for beer, wine, and liquor to be consumed on the premises, uh, at that location. And the certificate, uh, of the engineer, county engineer, to say that it meets all of the distance and separation requirements prescribed by law. And finally, the ad that ran in The Telegraph to confirm, uh, that the application was pending. The committee of the whole recommends approval of this one license. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of that license signify by saying aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it, and that license, uh, will be, uh, issued as requested. Uh, that brings us now then, uh, to Old Business. And pursuant to the original, or to the previous motion, the first item, uh, of Old Business, uh, is an ordinance to deal with the marijuana issue. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend certain sections of Chapter Sixteen of the inaugural Code of Ordinances for Macon-Bibb County to prescribe a maximum penalty for certain violations related to the possession of less than one ounce of marijuana, to provide that no person shall be jailed for such offenses, to declare the policy of Macon-Bibb County with regard to minor marijuana offenses, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Um, is there further discussion? Uh, Mayor Protem, I got you first.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, thank, uh, all the citizens that have voiced their opinions and concerns over the past month or so. Uh, Macon-Bibb, if this, uh, ordinance is passed, will become the tenth municipality throughout the state of Georgia to, uh, decrease fines and support no jail time. Uh, in doing the research and talking to so many people, this is probably the first municipality that you've had the Sheriff Department, uh, Solicitor General's Office, and our District Attorney Office not come out and fight us, uh, tooth and nails, according to most folks. It's unusual. Uh, furthermore, uh, as it relates to the community support, from East Macon to North Macon, to South Macon to West Macon, seventy-five percent of this entire community plus supports no jail time and decreasing fines before. supports no jail time and decreasing fines before, uh, our sheriff, solicitor, and district attorneys were, uh, okay with this ordinance. So, as we, uh, move forward, people need to realize, uh, something very serious. Smoking and using, uh, drugs of any kind is illegal in the state of Georgia. And I think regardless of what we do this evening, it will remain as such. For the past three years, I've watched the state dome and those men and women in the legislation, uh, put forth efforts to try and help those folks with medical issues and problems. There are folks calling from all over the country because there are two places, and one is in Fort Valley, that's gonna be allowed to, uh, grow marijuana and produce cannabis oil. So, as one person stated, it is here. And so, uh, I would just, uh, urge us that this is not the end of the world. This is the beginning of trying to help those young men and women that have suffered for so long and trying to better their lives, change their lives, and do better. Uh, I listened to one of my colleagues, and he, I think, was one of the good deputies, the good deputy sheriffs, that said that he's never arrested anyone, uh, for, uh, use of less than an ounce, and I appreciate that. But we know that, uh, according to record statistics from all over the state of Georgia, that that happens more frequently than not. So, I just encourage you to, uh, support this entire ordinance along with this community. I've never seen it where this community and the polling has been in such favor of an ordinance, uh, that some just think it's a big headache. I don't think it's a big headache. I think it's a relief to those that have suffered in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Commissioner Jones, I got you next, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rationalization. It's often been said that we can't live a day without a rationalization. Whether it's right or whether it's wrong, it's always easy to rationalize something regardless of the outcome. With all due respect to the Solicitor General's Office, with all due respect to the DA's office, with all due respect to the Sheriff's Office. I'm really an independent voter. I have, uh, tried to look at both sides of every issue, and that's what I've done on this. And there's a lot of things to consider. Number one, the Drug Enforcement Agency still, still considers pot on par with drugs like heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamines. Substances with no medical qualities and a high likelihood for abuse. That comes from the DEA. They have not changed their stance on that. You can go to any, many, many healthcare professionals throughout this city, whether they be medical, whether they're, uh, family counselors, and I've heard from many of them. And the negative side effects of using marijuana are many. I'll name just a few. Addiction is one. Memory loss, social anxiety disorders, paranoia, heart damage, lung problems, appetite irregularities, decrease in motor responses, and poor decisions. I'll bet you you can go to any marriage and family counselor, counselor in this city, and they see patients. They're not there to treat that, but they talk about that, and they see it in the way they react and how they make poor decisions. So, I've heard from many churches. I bet all of you have as well. Some predominantly black, some predominantly white. I've not heard from one that's in favor of legalizing or, or decriminalizing and holding the fine to seventy-five dollars. Mr. Ken Smith made some good analogies. We've got many things that are fined a lot more for, and so now we're gonna take it backwards. And we're gonna tell our citizens, we're gonna tell our criminals, and more importantly, we're gonna tell our children, it's okay to smoke pot. Now, I came from the age where it started. Never used it. I guess I was one of the odd ones. Never used it. Tell our children it's okay, because if they catch ya, if they catch ya, and they probably won't, they're only gonna charge you seventy-five dollars. Not a big deal. Hey, and it's not going on your record. So, we're encouraging and incentivizing the use of marijuana. You can, you can, let's just call it like it is. You can slice it and dice it any wa- any way you want to, but that's what you're doing. It's a slap on the wrist. It's okay to smoke marijuana if you get caught, because it's only a seventy-five dollar fine. No big deal. Many citizens in this community have contacted you and have contacted me, and they wanna know why in the world is this in the top one hundred of challenges we need to take on in Maconville County? Of all the problems and all the challenges we have, why in the, why did it make the top two hundred? I don't get it, and they don't get it. It's really strange to me. Other, other effects. Short or long-term effects. You know, THC quickly passes from your lungs into your bloodstream. It affects brain development. These are factual. It affects the way we breathe. People have breathing problems because of it. You have an increased heart rate because of it. That's not a good thing. I can tell you from a medical standpoint, not from marijuana, but from recent health issues, you don't want an increased heart rate. That's not a good thing. Long-term marijuana use, temporary hallucinations is common, temporary paranoia is common. Patients with schizophrenia, their symptoms. So, you know, I'm trying to find the good in passing a law like this. And you know, it, it really, it's almost offensive to me when somebody from another community comes in and says, well, Atlanta does it, and so-and-so does it, and so that's the rationale why we should use it? We, as a government, use that sometimes when we wanna raise taxes. Well, so-and-so has a such and such a fee. Why don't we add that fee? Why don't we raise their taxes because so-and-so does it? What kind of idiocy is that? So, I don't think it's a good thing to do. I'm, I'm really, uh, again, over two hundred churches in Maconville County. Have you heard from one that wants to think this is a good idea? I don't think so. I, I don't understand the rationalization. What's the rationale for making this a good idea? We're not talking about medical marijuana. That's a different animal. That's a different animal. And these facilities like Fort Valley State that are gonna grow it are for medical marijuana. But, we're on a real slippery slope here, folks. A real slippery slope. And if you think somebody high on marijuana, out driving around, I think you need to, you consult with MAD, Mothers Against Drug Driving. They'll tell you that's not a good idea. We don't like people high and intoxicated, driving around, and it impacts those of us who have kids and grandkids. I really don't understand it. Really don't understand your rationale for wanting, thinking this is a good idea. I think it's, as bad a idea has come down the pike since we've been in business here as a, as a consolidated government since twenty fourteen. I've not seen a worse piece of legislation. How you feel about?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones, and, uh, I've got Commissioner Wynn next. Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, much of what Commissioner Jones just said, I can, uh, relate to, and I agree with. I also wanted to add a few more comments. It's funny how you can listen to people and you hear it a different way. Pastor Herring talked about making wise, godly, and law-abiding decisions. I think the person that mentioned it earlier didn't mention the law-abiding part, but he mentioned that in his prayer to us. Um, we, we have citations that are given for things, and the Solicitor General's Office has said, you know, they use some discretion when we have those citations come through. They might necessi- might not necessarily give them a fine, certainly might not give them jail time, but they can do what they want. If we can already do what we want within our court system, why change anything? We don't need to change this. It's just not needed. And I'm like Commissioner Jones. I'm like, we, don't we have enough issues for our community, Maconville County, before we start worrying about changing the way we, um, fine people for using marijuana? I think it's dumbing down our laws. Somebody else said that. I think what we should be doing versus legalizing this or making it a less of a fine is that we should be working on prevention and keeping people from smoking marijuana, starting with our young people. And I think that you would all agree, that you that have children and grandchildren would hope that your, your grandchildren and children don't use marijuana. I think that's where we need to be working, is using our money and our efforts towards that versus giving them a free rein on, yeah, you can go out and smoke pot, and you'll just get a seventy-five dollar fine, and we'll just go on your way. Won't be on your record. You know, if you get caught doing a, um, traffic violation, that goes on your driving record, on your driver's license. So, when you go to renew your insurance, it might make your premium go up, or heck, you might have your policy canceled, especially if it's driving under the influence. Yes, you will. It'll also affect things like getting a job and keeping a job. Most companies now do a drug test on people before they hire them. We've even, they, we've even been told in Maconville County that we have lots of jobs out there, but most of the people are failing the drug test. So, therefore, you can't get a job, you can't make yourself, your life, any better for you and your family. And then when you're on the job, there's such a thing as a random drug test. If they take your drug, you do, do a drug test on you, and you're found to be in top, have drugs in your system, then you can be fired. There you go with your job and your livelihood. And the other part about being able to, you can't get a job, you can't keep a job. And don't think for a minute that they're not gonna test you randomly, because they will. Many jobs require that for the safety of the public. So, the things that we're talking about here are, are things that, this thing is not something we should be worrying about. It, it just, rationalization, you're all gonna rationalize it if you want to in your way. And miracle, cannabis oil is not marijuana. Producing marijuana to make cannabis oil is a totally different subject, and that's been legalized. Legalization of marijuana has not been changed. It is illegal in this state. I just cannot understand what it is about the word illegal that people are not understanding. If we start dumbing down this law, what other law are we gonna start dumbing down? I heard in another state, an attorney general said, we're not gonna prosecute theft cases if they're less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. That means they can come into your house and my house every day and steal less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. We're not gonna prosecute you. That's true. I heard it on the news. It's the state that's doing that. Do we dumb down the laws on theft? Do you want people breaking into your homes and cars and not being prosecuted because it was less than seven hundred and fifty dollars? You know, where do you stop from changing the laws and tweaking the laws and dumbing down the laws? Where does it stop? This is not something that we should be worrying about right now. We should be worrying about the finances of our community and how we're gonna help people in our community as a whole. This only affects part of our community. They say that blacks in our community are disproportionately arrested more than whites. I wanna know if that's true, and if so, why? Are the policemen targeting the black neighborhoods? What is the problem? I mean, is that, is that something that we should worry about, or is it something that someone on the streets should worry about? Why are they targeting people on the streets more than they, black people on the streets more than they are white? Are people using it differently and just being caught because they're doing it out in the open more? Are they being caught in the commission of another crime like theft or driving under, driving speeding, not stopping at a stop sign? Why is it that they're being caught more than white people? I wanna know that answer from our police chief, our, our sheriff, rather. But these things are things that concern me. I, I don't like our community to be known as, uh, someone that's dumbing down the laws and, hey, you can come to Bibb County and you can smoke pot and get caught, seventy-five dollars, just go about your way. They better not cross back over to Jones County or Crawford County or Monroe County, because they'll get a bigger fine over there for doing that. Now, you just need to think about this, and we need to think about it as a commission, whether we wanna change our law or we wanna work with our people to make us better and avoid those substances that are not good for us. I think you really need to think about that, and I think we need to think about that. That's why I'll be voting no for this.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Uh, next, Commissioner Allen?
Off the road call vote, please.
Noted. Uh, Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, sir. Um, I think the criminal justice system affects the young black boys coming out of South Macon much differently than it affects the young men coming out of North Macon. Um, as it relates to this ordinance or any other place of entry that you might see your young people entering the criminal justice system. And I think we're all aware of several different types of stats that show the disproportionality. Um, and here in Macon, this marijuana bill is no different. We are not making marijuana legal in Maconville County. We are decreasing the harm that may befall you if you are convicted. Um, right now, I believe the, the current, the current ordinance states that you could receive a thousand dollars in fines and up to a year in jail. Um, it seems as though the entire law enforcement community agrees that that is excessive because the most common penalty to befall you is currently a three hundred dollar fine. That's what probably ninety percent of the people who, who are convicted of this in Macon, Georgia are getting. But there is that five percent, like, some people are having a worse outcome. And it seems that that disproportionately slants again towards young black men. Um, I don't know why, but it is a fact of our reality here. Um, and when I think about, I, I think most important to me that it's not just marijuana. Marijuana was the tip of the research. Um, but right now, when I, and I at least see forty percent of those people are there for pre-trial, pre-trial. Haven't been convicted. They can't afford the bond to get out. That's what we are doing in our jail. Um, and I think that's a mistake. We're not using our jail properly. We've become complacent in using our jail for people we're mad at. I'm mad because you have a substance abuse issue. It upsets, or it makes me uncomfortable. And I, I honestly, when we think about the system that we're running, that people that we're mad at is not the place or the best use for jail. It's people that we're scared of. It is people that we're fearful because they have proven themselves a threat to society. Uh, increased heart rate, bronchitis, anxiety issues, the ability to be at a higher cancer rate, or not having an appetite, to me are not good places to have that treated in a jail. It is no help to our community. It is expensive, and that is not the best place for mental health treatment. Typically, when we think about drug use of a user, substance abuse is a mental health issue. We think about it for the opioid epidemic, cancer, heroin, and marijuana included. These folks are having stress problems, trauma problems, anxiety problems, that they are managing and dealing with poorly. And I agree that is the poor and most illegal way to deal with that issue, but by and large, that's what they're dealing with. And when we send them to jail, we're not reforming them in any way or teaching them. I, I guess we want it to be the slap on the wrist that wakes them up and they could become a new person. Jail, as we currently administer it, is not creating that type of outcome. And to continue to consent our young substance abuse patients into that type of system is not correct. And I, I guess I'm, I'm pleading for a new approach. There are hundreds of people who go through our system each year on this very issue that we can do better. And what I'm saying is better, it is still very much illegal. You're not gonna find yourself employed by Maconville County or find yourself in any less trouble. The only thing that is changing is that it is a fee that you can possibly afford to pay yourself, would not have to worry about going on probation about it or anything else weird, and you can cede yourself to getting outside help outside of our judicial system, which is the best place for it. We are not equipped, that is, mental health, River Edge, and other places. Um, and that's what I'm calling for here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Uh, Commissioner Jones, I've got you again, sir. Uh, Commissioner Jones, I've got you again, sir.
Yes, sir. Just wanna add a couple of things, and, you know, we, there's, there's always a study that says, well, this is good, or this is bad, and then, then there's the opposite study. Yeah, you can just about, I hesitate to use the words "always" and "never," but there typically is a study that will say, well, this is a good thing and this is not a bad thing. And I, and I don't disagree with a lot that Commissioner Watkins said, but this is not really about the, uh, you, you know, you're talking, we're talking about a less than one percent on, on the, do we need revision and, and, and do we need to scrutinize our law enforcement system? Yes. And I would be happy to look at that and work with you on that or anybody else. But marijuana is a gateway drug, in my opinion, and, and the opinion of many healthcare professionals. Hopefully, there's nobody here, but there are those in Macon-Bibb County who want this passed for a personal reason. Either they've got the marijuana habit and it makes it convenient for them, or it's, it's a personal monetary gain that may come from this. And there are those in our community that fall in those two categories. They're not really interested in limiting or decriminalizing, they're looking out for numero uno, either personal monetary gain, or they have the habit themselves. I yield back.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Slessinger, got your light on next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for me, the decision is really relatively simple, and as it's been said, nobody around this horseshoe is advocating the, the use of marijuana or even calling for the, uh, decriminalization of marijuana. The way I see it is, we're really trying to, from my perspective, safeguard the future of our children. Now, I have, I told this story during the public hearing, and it bears repeating. There was an individual that came to me at the temple. He said, "Rabbi, I, I need a job. I'm willing to take any job, just, you know, please help me, um, you know, help me get a, a job so I can, you know, feed the mouths that I'm responsible for." So I said, "Okay, um, you're really willing to, um, take any job?" And, um, he said, "Yeah, I'll take any job." So had a acquaintance who, uh, offered what I would call menial work. Excuse me. It was outdoors. It was, uh, heavy, heavy lifting. Pay wasn't, um, great, but, you know, a job's a job. So I went back to, so I went to that person and I said, "Listen, I got a guy who, uh, needs a job. Um, will you talk to him?" He said, "Yeah." He says, "Actually, I'll be glad to, uh, hire him, and I'm gonna do three things. The first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give him a drug test. The second thing I'm going to do is I'm gonna give him a criminal background check. And the third thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give him a credit check. He fails any one of those, he's not getting the job." So I went back to the guy, I said, "Listen, you're gonna get a drug test, you're gonna get a criminal background test, you're gonna get a credit check, you're gonna pass, uh, you're gonna pass those three tests." He told me, "Yes." Well, he ended up failing, not the drug test, but the criminal background check, because he had a, uh, a misdemeanor on his, um, record that showed up, and immediately, um, he just wasn't gonna get that job. It immediately exempted him. And I said to myself, dang, if you've got, you know, a, a, you know, a misdemeanor, um, you know, drug charge, marijuana charge, that's going to prevent you from getting what I called, you know, menial work, outdoors, heavy lifting, then that, um, misdemeanor is gonna dog you or him for the, for the rest of his life. Now, you know, we have children both, you know, in every quadrant of this, uh, city, including, um, North Macon, who, um, I guess are, you know, involved in what I would call adolescent mischief, of which, uh, marijuana use is often very, very, um, popular. Um, we've got, you know, children in our community who are, you know, guilty of what I would call youthful indiscretion, and who, um, you know, end up in possession of, you know, small quantities of, uh, of marijuana, who don't deserve to have a misdemeanor, um, blemish on their, their records that's gonna dog them for the rest of their lives, that's gonna prevent them from getting into college or professional technical programs that, that are gonna prevent them from getting jobs like it did, um, uh, the, uh, person, the individual that I was, uh, working with and trying to advocate for. I just wanna make sure, and I'm going to, uh, support this, um, I just want to, uh, make sure that we give, um, children, good children, children who are guilty of adolescent mischief or youthful, uh, indiscretion, I would, I just wanna make sure that we give them the full chance that they, they have to succeed in this world going forward without being dogged for the rest of their lives by a indiscretion, a mischief act that they will outgrow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Slessinger. Commissioner Will, I got your light on again.
Thank you. And I'll only be brief. Um, a couple of things, Commissioner Slessinger just made a good point. Um, I had mentioned rehabilitation and trying to keep children from doing this so they won't have this on their record as they become older and look for a job. So this is where we need to focus on, prevention, not legal, not making it easier to do, but making it harder, making it something they don't want to do so that won't be on their record be, when they become an adult. Yeah, we do some dumb things when we're kids, but this is something that we can teach our children not to do. And you don't want your children and your grandchildren being around people that have, or showing them how to smoke marijuana or use marijuana. You know, I talked to someone that's in our community here that's in a leadership position, and he said he actually moved from Colorado where it's legal, and I said, "Why did you move all the way from Colorado back to Macon, or over to Macon?" And he said, "I have two small children, and I didn't want them to grow up around the marijuana use that I was experiencing in Colorado. You could step out of your car, step out of a business, step out of a restaurant. My children would step off a school bus and they'll be smearing mouth, smelling marijuana." He said, "I just didn't want them to grow up in that environment." And he said also, the thing about the, um, homeless rates, he says, people forty-five and up were more homeless than others, but now the rate was down to thirty-five and up, and that meant that more people were not working, not, not being responsible, and, and not having places to live. Um, one of the commissioners mentioned that seventy-five percent of the community northwest, east, and south, uh, are in favor of this. Must not have, must have not have taken the poll in my northwest district because everyone I've heard from, except two, are not in favor of this. And I'm, I'm like Commissioner, uh, Jones said, if you checked with all of the over two, two hundred churches in this community, I bet you'd have a no on their vote, too. So, you know, just to kinda paraphrase something, like Nike says, you know, just do it to stay out of trouble, just don't smoke it. Just don't do it.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Will. Uh, got, uh, Mayor Protem, got your light on again?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on last year, uh, myself, Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Lucas, uh, the UDA Director, Alex Morrison, our county, uh, manager, Julie, all had the pleasure of going to Denver, Colorado, and hanging out for three or four days. And with all due respect, we did not experience, I never smelled marijuana when I was in the city of Denver. And I just think, I would just hate for anybody to say that about Macon-Bibb, that, you know, certain things about us that they've experienced in a negative light. And so, uh, we have a great relationship with the, uh, uh, smart cities that Denver is a part of, and I would just say that we, uh, look forward to continuing that relationship and going back. And so, we did not experience that. And with that, I would, uh, call for the question, please.
Uh, there's a call for the question, I've got one waiting. Uh, uh, so she, uh, agrees to call the question, all in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, so we'll call the question. We'll begin the roll call vote, uh, with Mayor Protem Tilling. Mayor Tilling, how do you vote?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Um, Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
Votes, no. Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Votes, no. Commissioner Bibbins?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Votes, no. Uh, Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Commissioner Slessinger?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Votes, no. So I have, uh, one, two, three, four, five. I have five, five votes, yes, and four votes, no. The, the bill having received the requisite, uh, majority vote, uh, it's hereby adopted. Uh... All right. That, that, that moves us on to, uh, other old business, but Commissioner Lucas, I've got your light on again, or was that just a mistake?
But, um, I, since the, uh, Mayor Protem called for the question, then I, I was ready to vote.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, and I've got your light on again, Commissioner Shepherd?
I was gonna call for the question, and he did it before I did.
Good, all right. There was a delayed pop-up here, I guess, I'm sorry. Uh, all right, next item of old business is actually item A, uh, on the agenda, uh, and that is to rename, or, excuse me, to, to request our local legislative delegation, uh, to rename the Thomaston Road. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution.
Oops, wait a minute. I'm sorry.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission requesting the Georgia General Assembly to adopt local legislation for Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to rename and dedicate that portion of State Route seventy-four from Interstate four seventy-five westward to the Bibb County-Monroe County line as Tobysofki Parkway and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is an ordinance, um, to, uh, close, uh, the current pension plan to new hires and rehires after July the first, twenty nineteen. So the plan would remain open for those that are already in it, but it would be closed to new hires after July the first. Now I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend dependence, one, of the Charter of Macon-Bibb County relating to the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan pursuant to the authority granted in Macon-Bibb County under the Georgia Public Retirement System Standard Act, OCGA Section forty-seven dash twenty dash one, and Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, so as to close the plan to new hires and rehires effective July the first, two thousand and nineteen, and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Watkins?
Just wanted to clarify that this is closing the current plan, no change for existing employees, but this would only affect new hires hired.
That's correct.
With no change to their system, this only affects new people moving forward.
Correct. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Um, next is item, uh, C, uh, which is, uh, an, a resolution, uh, to authorize, uh, agreement, uh, to a consent order with the Environmental Protection Agency regarding our stormwater system. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the administrative order on consent with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for remediation and improvements to the county's stormwater system and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One, no, Bibbins. Uh, but the, uh, eight, uh, in favor, as the ayes have it, uh, and the ordinance is, I'm, I'm sorry, the resolution is adopted. Um, item D, uh, is a, a resolution to approve the twentieth amendment, uh, to the timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the twentieth amendment to the two thousand and eighteen SPOS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOS project manager and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Bibbins, got your light on, sir.
Can we just say what that change is?
Uh, y- y- yes, sir, the, the, uh, the, the, the resolution is to approve the twentieth amendment, and actually, there were several changes, but the biggest, the biggest one was to move money forward, uh, in the roads and bridges construction timeline, uh, for the, the roundabout and sidewalk improvements at Middle Georgia State University. That was the biggest one. And, and the, the timeline is just approving the timeline, that we'll, we'll have each individual ordinance coming up momentarily. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the, uh, committee amendment to the resolution or to the resolution that, as amended by the committee, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got one, one, no, Commissioner Bibbins. Uh, so the ayes have it, and the, uh, committee, uh, amendment, uh, or the, hm, the resolution as amended, uh, is adopted. Uh, next is item E, uh, which is an ordinance to actually appropriate, uh, some of the money that we just moved and shifted on the timeline. Uh, this dealing with Middle Georgia State University and the sidewalk improvements and entranceway improvements, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two million, five hundred thousand dollars from SPOS bond proceeds and our SPOS revenues from the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, roads and bridges, MGSU line item, as shown on the two thousand and eighteen SPOS project timeline and budget, for purposes of approving and providing for the funding plan for the Middle Georgia State University roads and sidewalk improvement project and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One, one, no, Bibbins, the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is, uh, item F, which is another ordinance, uh, to appropriate additional SPOS funds, uh, this for public safety item and the towers, uh, line item, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, sixty-six dollars from SPOS bond proceeds and our SPOS revenues from two thousand and nineteen public safety towers line item, as shown on the two thousand and eighteen SPOS project timeline and budget, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is a, a companion resolution authorizing the, uh, wo- work, uh, I'm sorry, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Isler Demolition, uh, to take down the tower behind the government center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Isler Demolition Incorporated in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the demolition of the government center radio tower, to be paid by SPOS bond proceeds and our SPOS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, item H, um, is a, a companion, uh, resolution, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with all state tower, uh, for improvements, uh, to the shelter and the radio tower at the Knight Road Station, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing- authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Allstate Towers Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars from services related to the construction and installation of upgrades to the Knight Road Communication Shelter and Radio Tower to be paid by SPOSS bond proceeds and our SPOSS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a resolution to approve a lease agreement with River Edge for space on the Emory Highway, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with River Edge Behavioral Health Center in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for office space at one seven five Emory Highway in substantially the same form or tax share two as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is, uh, an ordinance, uh, to appropriate some funds to pay for flood damage in the EMA, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and six dollars from fund balance in FY nineteen budget to various accounts in the Macon Bibb County EMA for flood damage in the EOC and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is, uh, an ordinance for a supplemental appropriation for the coroner. Uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of sixty-five thousand dollars from fund balance in FY nineteen budget to the coroner's contractual services account for services related to body storage costs and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, that brings us to item L, um, which is an ordinance, uh, to authorize a correction of a clerical error when we passed, uh, a law before. And I'll ask the clerk, uh, to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the correction of a clerical error by amending ordinance number O dash nineteen dash oh oh seven to correctly reflect a new Article eleven being added to Chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of Macon Bibb County instead of Chapter six for purposes of establishing the Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Program and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is item M, uh, which is a resolution to amend regulations regarding Lake Tobasofki to allow, uh, free visits by Bibb County schools, uh, on school days. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the regulations governing the Tobasofki Recreation Area related to parking fees in order to allow for free visitation by school trips on school days and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the, uh, Operations and Finance Committee, uh, recommends approval of the resolution as amended. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, the, we said this is for Bibb County schools only, but-
That was the amendment.
Okay, and that is for both private and public, is-
That is correct. Bibb County schools, public and private. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the, uh, resolution as amended is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a, a resolution for an appointment, uh, to the Bibb County Civil Service Board. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to confirm the mayor's nomination of Raymond Timely to serve as a member of the Bibb County Civil Service Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a companion, uh, resolution for a reappointment to the Civil Service Board. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to confirm the mayor's nomination of Nancy Terrell to serve a second term as a member of the Bibb County Civil Service Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, other, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, finally, item P, uh, is a, a resolution to grant, uh, a, a release of a demolition lien. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to grant a release of the demolition lien filed against that parcel of real property known as five, as one five one nine Schofield Street Lane and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Um, there are a few items of new business that I will read and refer, uh, to committee, uh, for further study and evaluation. First is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment, uh, to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars from Information Technology Repairs and Maintenance Software License and Maintenance Account and the Repairs and Maintenance Computer Hardware Account in, to the Repairs and Maintenance Computer Hardware Account to cover the balance for the Williams Communications Contract for FY twenty nineteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, second, uh, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a construction contract between Macon Bibb County and International City Builders in the amount of two million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance to Henderson Stadium to be paid by capital improvement funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Those are all of the new business items that have come down from the attorney's office thus far. But we anticipate, over the balance of this week, additional items will come down. So I would urge you to get the agenda, which is published by the clerk online on Friday afternoon, and will contain all of the items that have been sent down by the attorney's office and which will be considered at the committee meetings, uh, beginning next week, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, uh, in the commission meeting room, uh, behind us. Uh, now it's time for, uh, public comments on non-agenda items, and we have one. Our friend Donald Richardson, uh, is here and wants to talk to us about some grassroots reflections. Uh, Mr. Richardson, good to see you doing so well, sir. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Second Samuel, chapter six. Again David gathered together all the chosen men of Israel, thirty thousand. And David arose and went with all the people that were with him from Baal or Judah to bring up from thence the ark of God, whose name is called by the name of the Lord of hosts that dwelleth between the cherivims. And they set the ark of God upon a new cart and brought it out of the house of Abinadab that was in Gibeah. And Yuziah and Ahio, the sons of Abinadab, draped the new cart. And they brought it out of the house of Abinadab, which was at Gibeah. Accompanying the ark of God and Ahio went before the ark. And David and all the house of Israel played before the Lord on all manner of instruments made of fir wood, even on harps and on solderes and on timbrels and on cornets and on cymbals. And when they came to the corns threshing floor, Yuziah put forth his hand to the ark of God and took hold of it, for the oxen shook it. And the anger of the Lord was kindled against Yuziah, and God smote him therefore his error. And there he died by the ark of God. And this is my commentary, um, I have been a disciple of an author called Anthony C. Sutton, and I'm quoting from a source. In nineteen seventy-three, Sutton published a popularized condensed version of the section of the forthcoming third volume relative to military technology called National Suicide: Military Aid to the Soviet Union, after which he was forced out of the Hoover Institutions. His conclusion from the research on the issue was that the conflicts of the Cold War was not fought to restrain communism since the United States, through financing the Soviet Union directly, indirectly, on both sides, and at least Korea and Vietnam. But the wars were organized in order to generate multi-million dollar contracts. And, uh, as I say, I've been following, uh, this person, he is deceased. But in my daily prayers, I'm working on that thought and seeing how a lot of the problems that we are having since the New World Order in Atlanta and the Olympics with the new rise in leadership. From what I was told by secret societies, that what I've just read to you, and I would refer you to read the writings of this person, explains a whole lot what's going on in the world. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We appreciate you being here, appreciate you sharing those grassroots reflections. Having reached the, uh, the end of our agenda, are there any requests for a point of personal privilege? Uh, seeing none, we've, uh, reached the end of the agenda. Can we get a motion to adjourn? So moved, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, I hope you feel better.
Oh, good lord. I'm just over here snuffling and-
It makes you feel terrible.
Oh, gosh, it's awful. By the way, I, I, I wrote something down wrong, and I think, I'm afraid I even, I'm afraid I-